All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, everybody. We'll call the meeting to order here at 6:03 PM. And we are here first for our Questions to Directors workshop, and I'll ask Councilman Pacina to lead us off first with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise if you are able.
Thank you, Your Honor. Placing our hands over our hearts, we say, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilman. I'll now ask the clerk to please read the call of the meeting.
By authority of the state of Connecticut, you are hereby commanded to summon and notify Eugene Pino Serra, Megan R. Carter, Jeanette Blackwell, Vincent J. LaFredo, Darnell Ford, Edward McKeon, Brady L. Fopner Jr., Philip J. Pacina, Anthony S. Gennaro Sr., Edward Ford Jr., Linda Salafia, Anthony Mangefico, members of the Common Council of the City of Middletown, to attend a special meeting of said Common Council for the purpose of holding the Questions to Directors workshop on department agenda items for the regular Common Council meeting. Said meeting shall be a hybrid meeting to be held in the Council Chamber of the Municipal Building in said city and remotely via WebEx at Join a Meeting Event 23340406026 on Monday, May 2, 2022 at 6:00 PM. They're wholesale not but make due service and return to the clerk of said city three hours prior to the time of fixed meeting. City of Middletown, April 11, 2022, attested by Honorable Benjamin D. Florsheim Mayor. City of Middletown, April 28, 2022, I hereby certify I have delivered an attested copy of the foregoing order and attached agenda of the Common Council meeting to each and every council member named above via electronic mail, attested by Chief of Police Eric Casca.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will declare the call a legal call and the meeting a legal meeting, and we will open it up for questions to directors. Just want to do quick, two quick pieces of business before we get underway. First is to welcome Bobby Noel Peterson, who, in addition to wearing her Chief of Staff hat, is going to be serving as Acting Director of Economic and Community Development through this transition period. So any questions that council members have for those items on the agenda as they come up, they can be directed to Bobby, and thank you for being here. And second of all, I just want to remind everybody that we do have a 6:45 public hearing on the water billing schedule before the 7 o'clock council meeting. So we'll be a little bit truncated here tonight. So we'll get right into it. I'll declare the Questions to Directors workshop open, and we'll go first to Councilman McKeon.
Thank you, Your Honor. The fire chief could come up? Hi, Chief. I've heard it before, but you gave such a good summary of the overage that I thought it would be a great idea for our colleagues to have the same background information.
Good evening, everyone. So I sent the email. Hopefully, you all got on the transfer tonight. There's multiple issues that have created the transfer. One, the first one would be, I need to fund the Juneteenth holiday. Last year, the budget had already been approved, so Juneteenth didn't make it into the budget. So I need to transfer $23,450. And then in our, I'll get to the reasons of the fill-in budget, but I had taken $55,000 from one of our other team training, specialty team training line items to cover temporarily the fill-ins. So that money will go back to that $55,000 does the training for the dive team, technical rescue team, and our marine operations team. And then there's been a pretty large deficit created by mutual aid responses by the Middletown Fire Department. We're currently about 20% over our budget for the year, and we still have two months to go. And I've spoken in the past, here in the city and also the town of Portland, we send, whenever there's a structural fire, we send two fire engines. Our battalion chief, our assistant chief, who's a safety officer, and then a lot of times myself and Deputy Chief Albert respond. We're not part of that overtime line, but it's, we send a lot of resources to multiple departments to help with their fires. And it's been a busy, busy year. So like I said, at this juncture, about 20% over, I would anticipate that'll probably be 30, 35% by the time we're done with the fiscal year. There were some other large items that created the fill-in line to be where it is now. Myself, when I was the acting chief, I vacated the assistant chief's job, and then Deputy Chief Albert at the time was a battalion chief. He filled that in an acting role. So we were down two battalion chiefs for quite a while. We had one battalion chief out on a seven-and-a-half-month FMLA, which created a vacancy each time he would have been due to work. We also had, we're in the middle of a nine-month military deployment for one of our firefighters. He's currently serving in Poland, and he's supposed to be back in July, August. I'm not quite sure at this juncture if we're going to see him. That might be extended. So that's created a, again, a nine-month vacancy. We had, between retirements, it created four firefighter vacancies, and three of them are currently in recruit school. And those vacancies, when they graduate, will have been an 11-month vacancy, and one of them was a six-month vacancy. Our two female firefighters both had babies this year. So when we found out, when they notified us they were pregnant, at the three-month mark of their pregnancy, they transitioned to light duty. So they're no longer counted as shift personnel. They come in on light duty, but they don't count as shift personnel, so they need to be replaced. And then that transitioned into 12-week FMLAs once they had the babies. And then one of the firefighters, she's married to one of our lieutenants, so that was a double FMLA for 12 weeks. So far, since July 1, we've had 11 children born into the Middletown Fire Department, which all were FMLAs. So, yeah, with having a young department, it's, the families are growing. So that was another one of the reasons. And then year-to-date, since July 1, we've had 24 personnel out with COVID. All 24 were out for 10 days or more. So again, creating vacancies. In the collective bargaining agreement, our firefighters, we allow two of them off on vacation, PLs, whatever they're taking. So after that, we have to hire for those. So with people out on COVID or FMLAs or vacancies, it's created a larger gap in our fill-in budget. And then the last item, I don't believe I have on the list, is our injuries. And we've had three firefighters out on injury recently. Two are back to work, and our lieutenant is still out with his burn injury. He'll be, he was in to see me today. He's got two more weeks. He'll be released back to full duty. But that's going to end up being a 12-week vacancy for him also. So that's how we got to needing a transfer into our fill-in budget.
Thank you, Chief. Would you just, what do we do about mutual aid? I know it's an important thing, and I know we need to do it, but, you know, in the long run, what do we do as a city to make sure that that imbalance doesn't exist?
I'm really not sure. You know, there's, us being the largest department, we had a telecommunications meeting today, as a matter of fact, and Director Baralata printed off the, our monthly runs. And when you look at our runs, emergency calls for the City of Middletown Fire Department, we're just about double the runs of South Fire District and four times the amount of runs as Westfield Fire or Portland Fire. So with that, as you know, we have a bigger department, more resources. But it's gotten to the juncture of when we're responding, whether it be to a town that has a volunteer fire department or a smaller department than ours, and we respond to a structural fire, we need to do it safely. So that's where we've added that second engine company and also our battalion chief and safety officer, ensure that our resources that are leaving the City of Middletown operate as safely as possible. And, you know, there's a cost to doing that. Some of these departments, some of the smaller volunteer departments during the daytime especially are struggling than years in the past where members worked in the city or their town were able to respond to calls. That's just not the case any longer. So it's requiring us to send more resources than we have in the past. How we address that, you know, there's a couple ways to look at it. And some departments in the country bill for their services when they leave their jurisdiction. You know, we could reduce our mutual aid response, but that's not practical where we're at. And, you know, the other option, which gets talked about, is one fire department in the city. I know that's not a, I'll make sure I don't have any arrows or daggers coming my way, but, you know, yeah, there's a, you know, I'm sure you understand, there's duplications of services here in the city. You know, we have, we have a dive team, the other, South Fire has a dive team, Police has a dive team, Portland has a dive team, you know. We don't have a regional dive team. We have four separate dive teams. So it's, I don't see the issue getting, reducing going forward. It's going to get worse. So we just need to be aware that we're paying, and it's coming out of, this evening, it's coming out of my fund balance basically to help keep others in business. So that's where we're at. But from the Middletown Fire, for me as the fire chief, and it's my number-one priority is the safety of my members. So we need to be safe when we respond to structural fires and operate as safely as possible. So that's why we send the amount of resources that we send.
Thank you, Chief. Councilman Serra, Councilman Pacina, are either your questions for Chief Warren?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Pacina.
Just, Chief, real quick, and I'll take my position, put it off too, but I know the, you can correct me. It's been a while.
Okay.
But I know the state has been looking at more of regionalization.
Yes.
Within cities and so forth. Is there a possibility, I mean, you've got three dive teams here?
Mm-hmm.
Why we couldn't operate on a, maybe one, a regionalization with members from the three departments, for one, to save? And my other question is, your department really is the leader in departments that go out for mutual aid calls, okay? I believe South District has it, but nowhere to the level that your department has. So I'm wondering if there's a way to get the three fire departments together and maybe, depending on what the size of the incident is, instead of Central or Center of Middletown Fire going, maybe South District could go. Maybe it could be collaborative where you could rotate it so you're not always getting hit.
Right.
At the main level. And I'm just brainstorming here, just something for you to think about.
So for-
Because all three chiefs are good.
Right.
So now you can bring each other together and start the process.
For a typical structural fire, if it's in the city, like we had a fire on Portland Street yesterday. We receive an engine, one engine from Westfield and a ladder truck from South Fire, and then it's then our whole department. So we're getting one piece from each. So, you know, and if there's a fire in South District, we send them two engines unless they need a second ladder, then it's an engine and a ladder, and the same for Westfield. So it does get mixed and matched. It's just, we're a larger department. We have more people working and more available apparatus. An example would be, though, the other day, they had a large brush fire in South District out by the community college. And Westfield sent two pieces of apparatus, and South Districts were completely tied up. And then they called us requesting apparatus. And I called Chief Trasky and said, "You need to remember, you know, I'll send you one piece, but I can't send you more than that because our department's protecting the entire city right now because everybody else is tied up on that incident." So it's always a mixing and mix-and-match game, kind of, of what resources we send and then where we draw and mutual aid in from other towns and cities. So as far as the dive team, I've spoken to my dive team commander about, you know, regionalization of, and the state is looking at regionalization in the fire service. They've started that this year. So-
Yeah.
And that's just driven by need now, that a lot of the smaller volunteer departments in the state are having a really hard time attracting members now, and they're looking for ways to help each other out. And regionalization is probably going to end up being what the bottom line there.
Yeah. Well, personally, I want to thank you for your service and the service that your men and women do. Even yesterday, you know, when I saw that you were going down to Portland Street, I'm thinking, and then it ends up being an awning, and I'm saying, you know. So we appreciate what you're doing.
Yeah.
And the only thing I could say, saying I'm going to stop, is that the more you guys, the three chiefs, get together and really brainstorm, something good can come up.
Right.
It's just a matter of taking those initial steps.
And I've known Chief Trasky actually through the Connecticut Fire Academy for 25 years. So we have a great relationship, and we're working on a lot of, and along with Chief Argery and Westfield, you know, joint training and services we can provide. It's just, some of the larger fires, the other evening in Westfield where unfortunately the house burned almost to the ground, overtime-wise, that was a $3,400 evening for me, for the services that I provided. So, you know, it's, okay.
Thank you. Councilman LaFredo for Chief Warren, followed by, okay, Councilman LaFredo for Chief Warren, and then we'll get back on track with other directors.
Sure. Thank you, Chief.
Sure.
Just for the record, so all of the expense that you just articulated for your budget comes out of your taxing, the taxing district.
Yeah, it's my fund, my fund balance.
Right. Right. So there are three different taxing districts. So the-
Yes.
Resources financially are provided per charter and per state statute, whatever, and so forth. So, but there is something in the charter, and I can revisit it, I didn't bring it with me this evening, in which we can look at this in terms of providing, there's a statement in there regarding, at the end of the day, that the city will work to make sure it protects, you know, the citizens and mentions all three districts and so forth. So it's, we recognize it as a citywide responsibility, and with that responsibility comes the necessity to provide the financial resources.
Sure.
For that, you know, responsibility to fulfill. So there's that other, I'm raising it as a council member with my colleagues, as we look at the budget that we prepare and we look at the budget for the fire district that you represent, we may need to take a look at some of the services because of the nature of your department and ability to respond as effectively and on a timely basis and so forth, and the costs related to all that, that maybe we need to incorporate some recognition on a citywide basis because of the fact that, we're not talking apples to apples, apples here. We haven't for eons.
No, right.
And as things have changed. At the same time, you know, I very much appreciate the work and effort in the other departments, you know.
Sure.
I'm familiar with the men and women that have served out there and how they operate, but it's three different universes. So I just want to raise that because that's something we need, we collectively-
Sure.
-to take a closer look at that. And I really appreciate, you know, your coming forward as you do and treat complete transparency in articulating the reality of the situation that you're dealing with, even though that may, and I can imagine some of the statements you're making, some people within your department may not find them, may not appreciate that. But that's the reality that we deal with. You deal with it, we deal with it on this side as well.
Absolutely.
So I appreciate that. At the same time, you know, as Councilman Pacina has just said, and my colleague, Councilman McKeon, said, you know, the work and effort that you folks do is very, very good. So I wanted to raise that. And then the mutual aid and the possibility of the regionalization and the like there going forward. So I'll end it there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Chief. And we have next up, Councilman Serra had his line on, then we'll go to Councilman Blackwell.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to, I have two people I'd like to call, try and put on two different issues. I'll start first with Brig on 11D, the transfer of properties from Country Club Road and Long Hill Road.
All right, he is coming up on WebEx.
We hope. The last time I tried this, it was worse than the moon landing.
So far, so good, it sounds like. There's a mild buzzing sound.
One small step for the general counsel.
All right. Councilman, go ahead.
Sure. Thank you, Brig. It does sound better. It's actually quite reminiscent of the, of that famous day. On the transfer of property to youth, Middletown Youth Soccer, if you could review that briefly for the council and why that's important to do at this point, and I fully support what the Office of General Counsel has come up with. Thank you, Brig.
Sure. I think that Resolution in your packet does a pretty good job of spelling out what's been sort of long, complicated history. We spent some years talking with Middletown Youth Soccer, and it's sort of became clear over the years that it would be better for them to operate their own operations, really, and be less sort of in the city. So what the, what's before your grant is a purchase and sale agreement and notice of termination of lease agreements. Essentially does just that. It cuts the cord and says to Middletown Youth Soccer, Country Club Field are now yours to own and maintain. And, you know, Chris Holtley can speak to if need be, sort of the economic benefit, having retained the field, I don't know. But one of the things, most of our concerns was, listen, if we sell this property to you, after all these years of partnership, we work together, and then you turn around and flip it to say a developer, that's no good. And so they completely understood. And so what you see is that there's a provision in the documents. So it says, listen, if you turn to do anything other than, you know, play soccer, that sort of, that sort of use, it reverts back to the city. So I think from a legal perspective, the city's well protected. From a policy perspective, it seems to make sense in terms of managing our resources. And it's sort of a long, a long trip, but-
Yeah.
A sporting metaphor, I guess, from your goal.
So Brig, through the years, the city has had ongoing requests from Youth Soccer, and we completely support their program and their goals and the thousands of kids that have gone through it. But we could not support the further development of those fields, including bathrooms and parking lots and such. And now this allows them, I understand, to secure a loan to do that work and not at the city's expense. Is that true?
It is. And so this is one of the things that was, you sort of mentioned, sort of long process. One of the issues was, we bonded, as you recall, 21st Century Park Bond. And among the park bonds were substantial potential improvements and, I think, upwards of like $3 million for Country Club Soccer Fields. And there's language in the lease that could be read to obligate the city to do any number of those. It's substantial taxpayer expense. So part of what we're doing here is Middletown Youth Soccer is saying, listen, we have an argument as to why we might be able to take advantage of and insist on expenditure of those taxpayer funds, but we're going to walk away from that, and we're going to lump it and do it ourselves. One of the other things was the, the use of artificial field turf was a big issue as well. You recall that we had to come up with a structure that allowed them to use field turf, require them to rip it out, return it to its sort of Rousseauian state of nature before we entered in the lease. They had to try to secure construction and performance bonds, which we have to protect the city with. But to collateralize all that, they have, you know, get it financed to say, hey, bang, listen, we'll make good on it. If we don't, then you can do what? You can't do much because it's not really their property. They were nonetheless able to get financing for it, and the city was nonetheless able to get bonding and protected for it. But it was very difficult, and it remains this sort of, you know, it's, it's a bit of a platypus. I mean, what is it? Is it a duck? Is it a mammal? Is it a reptile? It's somewhere in between. It's made it, I think, sort of difficult for them to do what they want to do, and certainly expensive for us to try to keep doing what it is they are looking to do. So this is probably a clean, I think, for both parties.
All right. Thank you for your answer.
All right. The other questions for Brig, Councilman LaFredo.
Brig?
Okay. Go ahead.
Good. Thank you, Your Honor. So I have a number of questions. So what we have before us tonight is termination of the leases, lease, and yet to be presented and adopted a bill of sale. We don't have a bill of sale before us. The terms and conditions are not before the council to review and ask questions about. Am I correct?
No, the purchase and sale agreement is, for lack of a better term, the bill of sale.
Oh, so we, you, well, as I read it, so you're going to develop something yet. So we don't have a sale agreement that the council can actually review, dot the i's, cross the t's, and ask a question. I don't see that before me here this evening.
There is, there should be a purchase and sale agreement in your packet.
What I have is notice of termination of the lease in my packet.
I have in mind a purchase and sale agreement as well.
Does anybody else have a purchase and sale agreement? There's no purchase and sale agreement, Brig.
On, okay, Councilman, Councilman Blackwell is saying it is on, it is on Granicus, on the city website.
On the website? Okay.
Though it may not have been printed as part of everybody's.
Just a minute then. Okay. If someone else has questions, at this point, I'll stop and I'll, but look at what.
Any other questions for Brig on this topic in the meantime? All right. Can we go to standby? Because I know that Councilman Blackwell has been waiting for a little while. So go ahead. I'll give you the floor, and Brig will come back to you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to call Director Kozakowski, and I believe he's online. He's not, obviously, he's not here in the chamber.
Yes.
Is he?
You're up.
Oh, thank you. Wasn't sure if he was on yet. Good evening, Director Kozakowski.
I apologize. I'm a little under the weather, but I'm here.
Oh, I see you now. Thank you, sir. And I hope you feel better. I communicated with Director Kozakowski earlier today because I wanted to process with him its Resolution 11B, the Middletown Affordable Housing Plan. And I shared with the director the NCCJ report that was completed a couple of years ago, and that was from the National Conference for Community and Justice. That report, one of the areas that was highlighted in that report was housing. And so I wanted to know if the draft Affordable Housing Plan, if there were any recommendations in that plan that had aligned, from his perspective, aligned with the recommendations and solutions in the NCCJ report.
So that report that you referenced wasn't actually a direct influence on this Affordable Housing Plan. Looking at the recommendations of that plan, it seems like the goals as they relate to housing are very much in mind. Reading the NCCJ reports, net income housing communities, necessary assets for the city for rehabilitation, lease violation, advocate for.
Yeah.
So those are all similar recommendations in this housing plan. So I'm actually kind of proud that we took two different approaches, both based on a lot of public input and we arrived at the same place.
Excellent. And I, and I do think that's terrific that the two, although to the point you just made, Director Kozakowski, took two different paths, that the recommendations are aligned. And we know as a result of the NCCJ report, there were a lot of folks in this city that were extremely concerned about housing segregation. So I'm pleased to see alignment. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Director. I know Councilman Nozera also has a quick question for Director Kozakowski.
Mark, my question is, if you could just, for, for the council's sake, briefly explain the rationale to add the $140,000 to our 2022-23 budget with regard to the grant that didn't materialize? And we would add that agricultural expenditure in, in '22-23 to assist our farmers? You could just quickly outline what happened there?
Okay. So the Agricultural Committee, which is a subcommittee of the Commission on Conservation and Agriculture, has been working and brainstorming and trying to do what they can to support local agriculture in, in Middletown. And their, what their, what their goal with, with this project was, was a small grant program for local farmers who needed some funding to perform, you know, to complete various projects to, to, to help their, help their business. And through conversations with, with leadership, we were moving forward with use, with the plan of using the 2019 Open Space Bond that was approved by, approved in 2019. And in that bond, it had language where it said, at the recommendation of the Commission on Conservation and Agriculture, up to $250,000 could be used towards open space maintenance and agricultural uses. So we were all under the impression that this funding source would be appropriate for the, for, to fund these small grant projects, which happened, which are eight projects ranging from above $3,000 to $22,000. So upon review with the bond consul, they advised that we shouldn't be using the bond money for, it wouldn't be, wouldn't be an appropriate use of the funds. So we're kind of trying to identify other funding sources for these grants. We've gotten far enough along in the process where the committee developed a, an RFP for, for the bonds. They took in applications, developed criteria for evaluating them, went through the process, evaluated them and actually went to award, you know, went, went to award the, the grants in total of $140,344, if I, that's right off the top of my head. So we don't want to leave these, our, you know, the local, local farmers, you know, in the dust. And so we're looking for opportunities to, to, to fund these grants. And it seems like inappropriate path would be to put it in the 20, 2023 budget. So, excuse me. So, oh, and one more step that, that we went for just to support these farmers where the, the grant was to be set up as a reimbursement. So just to ensure that the, the, there was proper use of the funds. And so what we did was we worked with Citizens Bank to develop a kind of a, a loan program through them between the city and the farmers where they can raise, get a small loan to cover, cover the cost and perform their, their project and, you know, under the, you know, under the reimbursement from the city, or under the insurance reimbursement from the city. So we're just very excited to get this project going and hopefully we can get this funded in the next year's budget.
Thank you, Mark, for, for the explanation. It appears on base what you just said, this is a one-time expenditure in, in next year's budget. And what we do in '23-24 remains up in the air. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. We'll go back to Councilman LaFredo and I'll just give everybody the five-minute warning here. It is 6:40 PM.
Okay, Your Honor, I may have to ask Brig to stay, to extend his stay with us. I understand there's a need to have another public hearing regarding the water rates. Brig, this question I have, do you know what the assessed value of that property is?
I do not.
Was the assessed value of that property taken into account in your discussions with the city selling that property?
It's a $1 transaction. So what's taken into account is the, you know, decades worth of history back and forth, including the acquisition of the Long Hill Road property, which is, you know, in and of itself quite valuable. So if you were to try to take, you know, the value of the Long Hill Road property, the Country Club Road property, and all the history back and forth, it just seemed to be a bit of a non-starter. So it's a very simple $1 transaction.
So I'm, so the, I did check, for the record, so don't, for the record, I'll put it on the record during our discussion later. I did check with the tax assessor. So property one, dealing with 497, Lot 070497, the assessor indicated that that's worth And also checked to see what the assessed value of the other property was at the 49, 049, 070498. And that property is listed at $85,470. So you're telling me that in the course of the city selling this property, we did not take into account the assessed value of the property in terms of discussions with the potential buyer for a dollar?
Did you check out the assessed value of the Long Hill Road property?
Well, that's not, that's not, that's not on the table.
Well, it's, I mean.
Well, Brig, so the answer is no. We did not take into account that at all. So I'm, I'm in terms of the taxpayers asking. So the other question I have in terms of, this total acreage is 35 acres between the two properties, correct?
Plus or minus, yeah.
Okay. And are all of that land that the city owns currently being used by the soccer folks here that we're planning to sell it to? Do they currently have under utilization all 35 acres?
There are four soccer fields, one of which is field turf, the other three are natural grass, and we maintain the entirety of it in those three fields.
So do we know how much of the total 35 acres is currently actually being utilized and has been utilized under the lease agreement at this point? Because that, that land has been developed for the purpose of providing soccer. Do we know what, do we have a site plan? We don't have a site plan.
Yeah, sure.
So you know, in terms of that land, so do you know in terms of open space on the land, how much open space there is?
I assume it's go terminate with the, the land itself. In any event, when it's transmitted, it would be the entirety of the footprint, it would all be open space.
Question, can the folks who we're selling it to for a dollar turn it over to another soccer entity as long as they agreed to, could not, in other words, sale, sale it, transfer it over? Is there anything preventing them from selling the property to Soccer International or some other entity as long as it complies with the covenant as articulated in this purchase-sale agreement?
Uh, no.
Nothing?
No, again, the whole point was that we didn't want Middletown Youth Soccer turning it over for private development or something other than soccer. Middletown Youth Soccer is a nonprofit organization. It could be here in five years, it could be here in five days, who knows? So what mattered from the administration's standpoint was making sure that it remained open space, that it remained being used by soccer, Middletown Youth Soccer or, you know, Soccer International, Inc.
So let me ask you this. Did you also, by the process, on behalf of the city, look at, as it's a tax-exempt organization, check out the fact that they're required, of course, to file a 990 form to be exempt from income taxes and the like? Did you do such research regarding Middletown Youth Soccer and what they're required to file?
No, I'm not sure I would look into their income taxes for land.
So as a nonprofit, they're required to, do you know if they have any assets?
I'm sure they do. I don't know what the question is, though.
Okay. Well, the one I was able to, as of 2019, indicated that, just for the record, program services revenue was over $900,000 for that particular year, and the year before was $974,000. And according to the document filed, total net assets currently at the 2019 was $1,579,097. And we're selling it for how much? A dollar? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. It is 6:46. I still have a, a light on, but I, Councilwoman Slavia, do you want to go very briefly? And I think we, I know, I know we don't, we have another hearing to do, but we don't have any members of the public, it doesn't look like here.
I just was interested in what Councilman Nozera was having discussion with planning. Where that, am I missing something in the, in the agenda? Where that?
The second question related to the budget is not on tonight's agenda.
Okay. I was looking and couldn't.
You're absolutely right.
You got to remember. Thank you.
That was just a clarification, it sounds like. All right.
It's not on the agenda.
Not on tonight's agenda. That's right, for next, next week. All right. Well, with that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Adjourned.
Thank you, Councilman Pacina. Is there a second? Thank you. Councilman McKeon, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned. The Questions to Directors workshop is closed.